The public comments section of the meeting shall last no longer than thirty minutes. We have seven speakers, so four minutes is fine. So I'm going to ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address, school or organization So the first person on our public comment is Angie Amborn. Just really quick Angie, and also after Angie, we're going to have Jerry, is it Hanson? Come up, so in four minutes. Thank you.
Hi. Hello. Good evening. My name's Angie Amborn. I live at ten twenty-four Ferndale Street South in Maplewood, and I'm here tonight to comment on the bond referendum. So I am here to tell you that I'm voting yes on May fourteenth, and I'm going to give you a couple of reasons as to why I am doing that. The first reason is I feel there's really no better investment that I can make as a parent than the investment of my children, in our children. And we know that, you know, investment in our children is a benefit not just to, you know, Maplewood, but a benefit to society as a whole. I want to do everything that I can to make sure that my kids and all of the kids in ISD six twenty-two have access to the best and exceptional education that they can get. And I think this is, from a personal standpoint, is a, it's a small monetary asking from me as a citizen that I think will yield, the benefits and the rewards will be much greater than that small sacrifice that is being asked of me. The second reason I'm voting yes is, so let's be honest, the safety situation when you were all in school and when I was in school is markedly different in this country. And most of our schools are fairly old and are all due for an upgrade. And so from a parental standpoint, the safety of my kids, safety of all of our kids, especially when they're not with me and my husband, is of vital importance. So that is the second reason that I'm voting yes. And the third reason I'm voting yes is just basic infrastructure needs of our school district. I have been impressed with six two-two from the very minute that we've moved here, but I don't think we can expect our teachers and our administrators to keep up the level of excellence that they have been performing at if they don't have, you know, the basic infrastructure to do so. So every year, in my kids' classes, the classes get larger and larger, but we're not expanding to meet that, that growing population. And this is a problem that isn't going to go away, and there's plenty of evidence, and we all know, you know, what the detriment of large class sizes are. So those are the three reasons that I'm voting yes on May fourteenth, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you Angie. Next, we have Jerry Hampson. Can you come forward and state your name and address? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jerry Hampson, and I live at one eight nine eight BB Road, Maplewood, Minnesota. I'm speaking this evening in support of the referendum, the bond referendum. As some of you know, I'm a former school board member for eight years, been off for sixteen years now. I'm also a senior citizen on a fixed income in this district. However, I've had, I've had my children go through, my three children go through the schools here, and people then were, you know, paying levies for them to have decent facilities, and I feel it's, we need, we need to pay it forward. And I'm a senior citizen on a fixed income, kind of seemed like always the demographic that was, kind of was the ones that didn't, didn't always like to support, support levies. And right now, I have five grandchildren in six twenty-two schools, so I really still have a dog in the fight. They, I have a six one due tomorrow. Everything goes all right. It's Caesarian, so they get the pick today. But I, I know that having good schools adds, adds value to our, our property, which is important to me, because I'm on a fixed income, so I got to make sure that keeps, keeps going And I, I just think that this, this is really a good thing. We have, I, I feel like we've, you know, my kids are that age where they have school age children now, and I'm, I'm always getting this feeling that somehow six twenty-two is, is getting a reputation as being a, a second-rate school district. They, they want to go to Madam Edie, they want to go to South, South Washington County. And I think my daughter-in-law even felt a little disappointed that, that they live in Woodbury, and that she's in that part that's in six twenty-two. So I think it's very important that, that we support our schools and make, make sure our, our district is, is number one. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next, we have Dick Sepala. And actually, after Dick Sepala is Eileen Armitage.
Seems like I've been here before. I'm here this evening to speak in favor of the referendum. My previous job, and when I actually worked, I managed facilities, and I know the referendum is dealing with facilities, and this is a good example of one that we reworked, and it turned into a wonderful overflow for the high school for meetings like this. It's been great. I want my property value, because I'm on a fixed income, to keep on increasing in value. I worry when I hear about somebody open and rolling to Madam Edie. I worry when they go to Mounds U and White Bear Lake. I'm one of eighteen Sepalas that went to North High. And so I feel very indebted to this district, and I want us to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eileen Armitage. And after Eileen, we'll have Ron Serpac.
Good evening. Again, I'm Eileen Armitage, and I'm here on my own, also in support of the bond referendum. Thank you for having me tonight. My husband Tom and I have had the privilege to live in Norris St. Paul for seventeen years. We reside approximately eight blocks from Norris St. Paul High School. We have three sons, ages twenty-two, nineteen, and fourteen. I have owned and operated a professional tutoring business out of our home for twenty-three years, serving families in the East Metro and supporting their students' transitions from high school to college. Fifteen years ago, we chose to open enroll our oldest son to Madam Edie School District, and subsequently, open enrolled his brothers. Our two oldest sons have graduated from Madam Edie High School, and our youngest is an eighth grader. I grew up in Wilmer, Minnesota, where I attended the Wilmer Public Schools in the nineteen-seventies and eighties. Yes, I'm dating myself. And my husband Tom attended parochial schools in Minneapolis around the same time. When moving to Norris St. Paul, we planned to have our children attend the Norris St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale School District. Because of personal circumstances of our children, we decided to open enroll to the Madam Edie Schools, District eight three two. Our sons have had outstanding K through twelve school experiences, as they would have had in District six two-two. We are grateful for the choice to attend a nearby public school. It was a difficult but good decision for our family. As with most life experiences, our sons' education journeys have had some ups and downs. They have missed some great learning opportunities available to students in District six two-two. But I am thankful for their positive learning experiences and what I like to frame as opportunities for growth. Our entire community benefits when high-quality public education can be provided to meet the ever-changing needs of students and families within a school district. As you know, high-performing school districts help maintain property values, as has already been mentioned, supports the overall growth and health of families, and create outstanding educational opportunities for its students. You all know that, I know. There are many factors that contribute to high performance by a school district, but adequate and stable funding are a fundamental necessity without which teachers and administrators cannot succeed. I want to encourage all parents who live in District six two-two, and especially those who choose to open enroll their children to neighboring school districts, or opt for private or parochial education, and/or choose charter or homeschool options, to vote yes on May fourteenth in support of District six two-two's bond referendum. Last, I would like to personally thank the teachers, staff, administrators, and school board for their outstanding work and service to the students and families of District six two-two. Thank you again for this opportunity for public comment.
Okay, thank you, Eileen. Next, we have Ron Serpac. And after that, Dennis Fent.
Greetings Superintendent Osorio and School Board. My name's Ron Serpac. I live at twenty-one fifty-one Fifteenth Avenue East in Norris St. Paul. I retired, retired from the district after about thirty-five years of teaching some years ago, and some would say I have no skin in the game anymore. No kids in the district, no grandkids in the district, just a resident. But I do support the, the, I do support the bond on May fourteenth. Why? Well, I'll tell you why. For the same reason, I buy these coupons from the sports teams every spring when they come around, because I support kids. I'll vote yes because, for the same reason, I buy these candy bars that support the environmental learning center field trips every year, because I support the kids. I'll vote yes because I have, I, because I have the sports teams and clubs bag my groceries at Cub every year, because I support the kids. I'll vote yes because I support the Girl Scouts by buying their Girl Scout cookies every year. Bagging groceries doesn't help the kids that are taught in class closets or stairwells, but a yes stairwells, but a yes vote on May fourteenth will. Coupon cards don't help the kids taught, that are being taught right now in shower rooms or rooms designed for storage, but a yes vote on May fourteenth will. Candy bars will, will help the kids that are being taught in hall, uh, candy bars, the kids that are being taught in hallway, hallways or crowded spaces right now, but a vote on May fourteenth will. For the amount of money, I'll vote yes on May fourteenth because I support kids. I hope that came across right now. And for the amount of money that I spend each year on Girl Scout cookies, I can support every single student in this district now and for years to come. So I am asking everyone who's listening to vote yes on May fourteen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Dennis Fent. And after that, we will have Logan Jones.
Good evening Chair Yenner, Board members, Superintendent Osorio, and Cabinet. It's great to be back here, haven't been here for a long time, and I am thrilled to be for the reason I am. So let me first of all, thank you, and let you know that I wholeheartedly support this much-needed bond effort. Many people in my age group often comment that they remember exactly where they were and what they were doing back in November of nineteen sixty-three, when President John F. Kennedy was assassinated. I certainly do. I remember it well. But I bring this up because many of our schools in six two-two were built prior to that date, nineteen sixty-three. That was fifty-six years ago. Back then, our world was a very different place, especially for schools and for students. For one thing, it was a much safer place. As a teacher all of my career, I also remember exactly where I was and what I was doing when the news of the Columbine shooting came in. I also remember exactly where I was and what I was doing when news arrived of the Sandy Hook massacre. I could go on, as you know about shootings, but throughout this career of mine, I constantly thought that we needed to make a much greater effort to keep our students, our students, our most precious resource, safe and much safer. Last year, I happened to be in Florida when news came in about the mass shooting at Stoneman Douglas. One wonders if it will ever end, and one also has to wonder and think about that most horrific question. Could it happen here? Over the years, there has been much discussion and debate about how to keep our schools safe, but there's been very little action. Now is the time in six two-two, with the support of all of our citizens, to make that happen. You heard from other folks, and you can tell by looking at me, I'm a senior citizen also. I'm also on a fixed income. Therefore, you might expect me to be against this bond effort, but as I said earlier, I wholeheartedly support it. Our students are our most valuable resource, but in addition, from a more selfish point of view, this bond issue is a very large positive for me. Our schools are great, but they are old. They need to be updated, they need to be upgraded, and made more secure and safe. I'd have to pay a little bit extra in taxes to do that, but I would get much more in return. Great, modern schools add to the value of my community. They help keep our communities thriving and moving forward. They educate our future leaders and citizens. As a longtime resident, I benefit from all of that. Voting yes for this is a no-brainer for me, and I believe for all of our citizens. It's a fantastic investment in the future to our students, our schools, our communities, and honestly, a great investment for me. To do otherwise would be foolish. So thanks again for this much-needed effort to make our schools safer and to modernize the infrastructure that is so needed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Logan Jones.
My name's Logan Jones, and I'm happy to be speaking tonight for myself and on behalf of Andrew Gustafson, who's representing Tarn at a baseball game this evening. Both Andrew and I are current seniors at Tarn High School. We have asked to speak today to share our successes as students in District six twenty-two, and also to give reasons why we support the current bond request. Andrew has been the captain of the baseball team for the past two years, a member of the High Schools Against Cancer Executive Board, a DECA chapter officer, and an Eagle Scout. I have been the captain for both soccer and track for the past two years, an avid student and an active member for Relay for Life. This district has helped educate Andrew and I, and I soon, and we will soon both be alumni, prepared to accomplish our future academic endeavors. In addition to me, there are many students present here tonight who will also get here to give support for the bond referendum on the vote of May fourteenth. A few reasons why we support the bond referendum is because it would provide additional space for student learning. During our middle school and high school experiences, we have had, we have been in classes that were too large to fit in a classroom, forcing some students to sit on the floor or stand against the wall. We believe such environments make it difficult for teachers to make connections with students and provide opportunities for one-on-one learning. Andrew and I have been in classes that led more, that had more students send individual computers, which forced us to work in partners and in shifts to complete our individual projects. Experiences like these led to students being frustrated, and it takes longer for us to learn the needed skills. Our fear is that if the buildings are not renovated, opportunities for more independent and small-group activities will be diminished or completely taken out of classes, and that would not help any student. Another reason we support this referendum is because of the added security being proposed. We're happy to say that we've never had a situation in which security was needed. However, no one can be certain it will not be needed in the future. That is why updating security and building new entrances to each building will only keep students safer. Also, the proposed changes to pickup and drop-off situations is just another layer of security you are offering students, and for that, we thank you. In addition to expanding and learning environments and maintaining current class sizes such as woods, metal shop, or fax, you are recognizing multiple ways students learn, and that is appreciated. Andrew and I would also like to thank the district for all the CIS classes, which allow us to receive college credit before we even step on a college campus. We will be, or I will be starting at Loris College in the fall, and Andrew will be attending Gust Davis, both of us with ten college credits already under our belts. We can only believe opportunities like this will be attracted to families looking for a great district to, to enroll their students. The need for facility upgrades and secure, and security improvements, as described in the bond referendum, are a necessity in ensuring the proper growth and opportunities to current and future students in the district. This district has a strong tradition of developing great students into even stronger adults who continue to benefit and build greater futures for themselves. Despite the fact that we are seniors, weeks from graduation, we still want future students of this district to be able to thrive and receive the education and opportunities that we had and that they deserve. Andrew and I want to thank each, each and every one of you for giving us great educational opportunities, and a special thank you to all the voters who have supported students in six two-two in past referendums. We are asking voters to vote yes on May fourteenth, and please know that your yes vote is appreciated, and we will continue to make you proud. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Logan and Andrew. And thank you to all the public comment, for all the public comments tonight. Next on our agenda, we have the achievement words, and Caleb, I think we're all going to go down for the word.
The School Board of the Norris St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale School District is proud of its students, citizens, and staff who demonstrate service above and beyond the call of duty. We are proud to recognize the following individuals. Cowan staff members Deb Biddick, Kate Brazil, and Matthew Shealy are being recognized for their quick action in helping an injured child. Before a recent Ashland theatrical performance, this trio of Cowan staff members really helped out the entire family. Nurse Brazil showed up just in the nick of time to run through her list of concussion checks. Teacher Deb Biddick helped with the cleanup and consoling, and teacher Matthew Shealy was on the phone with nine-one-one. The family was a little panicky, but they were able to overcome the occurrence with the focus of these three individuals. They were calm, professional, and treated the child, who just happens to be Ben Jarman's niece and does not attend Cowan Elementary, like their own child. Everything ended well, and after the incident and inspection by a doctor, Ben's niece was able to go home without a single stitch. Thank you to Deb, Kate, and Matthew, who are nominated by Ben Jarman.
We'll have you just walk right past us, shake all our hands, and we're going to take your picture afterwards.
Thank you.
Can you take it back here, or do you want us to come forward?
We're going to have everybody squished together a little bit. We're going to have you just squish together, so we can get a little, get a little twirl up. That comes with these awards. Photo ops come with the award.
It feels cool all of a sudden. It was hot.
Photo ops come with the award.
For the Excel Award winner, Excellence in Community Education Leadership Excel Awards are presented to individuals and groups for their outstanding contributions to the continuum of lifelong learning in District six two-two. Three M Corporation, who was not able to be here, was nominated by Cheryl Geisperz. Three M, for more than, than twenty years, has provided teams of volunteer drivers for Gladstone's Meals on Wheels. Currently, Three M provides thirteen teams a week, which over a year's time adds up to almost seven hundred volunteer hours and five hundred meals delivered. Three M also provides an average of twelve thousand dollars per year in financial support to Gladstone Meals on Wheels through the Three M Gives and Volunteer Match Program. Thank you, Three M, for your community-mindedness. We so appreciate it.
We so appreciate it. Receiving the Community Educator Award is Jill Serene and De'lin Hanson, nominated by Laura Greenlee Karp. Jill and De'lin go above and beyond their roles as part-time bicultural liaisons to partner with the community education. They have helped families understand and register for community education programming, volunteered their time to create after-school programming for Latino students, collaborated on family events such as Dia de los Muertos, brought the La Fie dance troupe to perform at a special event for seniors, and provided cultural training for community education staff. Thank you both for partnering to educate our community.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Receiving the Lifelong Learner Award is Jalen Pineda Ruiz, nominated by Scott Helen and Rita Bulger. Jalen attends Harmony Adult Education classes in rain, snow, or shine every day. She's attended 400 hours of class in the last eight months, achieving much in a short time. Jalen started with Harmony Adult Education last July and improved her reading scores three grade levels in six months, which usually takes three years. She then took her next step and earned her GED. In addition, Jalen recently passed her Para Pro Assessment, which is one of the career pathways available at Harmony. She is truly committed to lifelong learning. Thank you, Jalen. Receiving the Community Education Senior Friend Award is Deb Thompson, nominated by Cheryl Geisperz. Deb has a sincere commitment to improving mobility in older adults and decrease their risk of falling. Deb was originally a student in a Tai Chi class and experienced the benefits of regular exercise. Since January 2016, Deb has donated her time to teach a class called Tai Chi Qui Gong Moves for Seniors. This class runs year-round and meets twice a week, which means that Deb has volunteered approximately 1,000 hours since 2016. Thank you so much for being a friend to seniors. And that is our achievement award winners for tonight. Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our consent agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of routine items that are voted on in a single motion. Board members have the option of pulling items off the consent agenda if they wish to discuss them individually. This evening's consent agenda includes: A. Minutes of the March 26, 2019 Work Study Session; B. Minutes of the March 26, 2019 Reflection Session; C. Minutes of the March 26, 2019 Business Meeting; D. Minutes of the April 29, 2019 Special Meeting; E. Minutes of the April 9, 2019 Work Study Session; F. Routine Personnel; G. Bit Awards; H. Dispersment. So are there any items that anyone would like removed for discussion? Okay, seeing that, I'm looking for a motion a second to approve items A through H. Okay, move by Navy?
Second.
Second by Livingston, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So our consent agenda is approved. And Christine, I think you want to say something?
I do. Thank you, Director of the Board. Chair Yenner, I would like to just take a moment for your consent agenda approval. I wasn't sure we'd have our guest here tonight, but I'd like to invite Lisa Sales-Adams to join me up here. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to one of our latest hires to our district. We have now hired a new Assistant Superintendent to join our team, Lisa Sales-Adams. You may recall that a couple of months ago, we lost our Director of Teaching and Learning. Peter Mao had left us to go work in West St. Paul. And as we have discussed earlier, instead of replacing his position for another director, we've hired a second Assistant Superintendent. And we've divided the duties of elementary and secondary. So our Assistant Superintendent Troy Miller will be overseeing teaching and learning elementary and his elementary principals. And we now have an Assistant Superintendent that's going to oversee teaching and learning for secondary and our secondary principals. We have Lisa Sales-Adams here with us tonight. She's not yet working on our team, but will be joining us shortly in early May. But I'd like to just tell you a little bit about Lisa Sales-Adams. She comes to us with over 20 years' experience in education. Not only is she a highly regarded instructional leader, she's a guest speaker in many venues. She's not only been an elementary principal, a middle school principal, a high school principal, she's also been an alternative school principal. She's currently an Assistant Superintendent in St. Paul schools, where she's been doing that role for about five years. And we're very, very fortunate to have her joining our team. They are very, very sad to be losing her, but she will officially be a six-two-two team member beginning May 6. So I'd like to have a chance for Lisa to introduce herself to you and say a quick hello this evening. So we're glad you were able to join us. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to first take the opportunity to thank the Board and Superintendent Osorio for the opportunity to join District 622. So when a superintendent first approached me, I was intrigued and excited about the offer and the opportunity. I've had an opportunity to learn more, do research, meet the team, meet the principals, and I am excited and I'm ready to go. I'm a collaborative leader. I want to bring my strengths, my talents, and share it with the district, but I certainly want to learn more and build relationships here, support our students, our staff, our leaders, our community. And I'm excited to be a part of this transformation. I do have my sticker on, so I'm expecting great things and looking forward to meeting everybody, so thank you.
Thank you and welcome. We look forward to it. All right. Next, we have our reports, and we have our student reports, and we have Caitlin Crumel.
Kendra Kerakay is our Athena Award winner and will be honored on Wednesday, April 24, at the luncheon hosted by Randy Shaver. Also this Wednesday is the NHS Academic Awards Ceremony. This event is a great way to celebrate some of the students who are achieving academic success, as well as those who are very involved in our school. The Tartan High School Knowledgeable Team competed at the Minnesota State Tournament last week in Brainerd, finishing in sixth place. The team includes Josh Marquettey, Adam Wozanski, Cade Severson, Alex Lopez, Sam Meyer, and advisor Doug Norlander. The 10 student athletes that signed their letter of intent for college last week were Kendra Kerakay, Andrew Gusson, Logan Jones, Claire Meter, Mel Price, Brayden Albert, Tim Owen, Carter Thurringer, Shaquille Young, and Solomon Whelan. We are so proud of all of our graduating seniors and can't wait to see where life will take them. The BPA blood drive took place today. This is the second blood drive of the year. We had lots of students participate in this great cause. With so many participants, it really reminds us of what a great community we are in, with students volunteering for good causes left and right. Conferences and incoming freshman orientation took place on Thursday. This was a great opportunity for freshmen to see what school they'll be in next year. There was an Athletics and Activities Fair, and also students received their first Tartan swag, a Tartan blue t-shirt that stated "Class of 2023." Many different clubs volunteered to help show the freshmen and their families around, including NHS, Link Crew, and Student Council. Relay is quickly approaching, May 17, and the students are getting more and more excited. Currently, we have raised nearly $73,000. There is a spaghetti dinner this Friday at Hope Church from 4:30 to 7:30, and this is planning to bring in even more major fundraising money. Some items being raffled off include Twins tickets, Vikings tickets, an Instant Pot, a TV, and more. Prom is May 11 at the Mall of America. Tickets are being sold until the end of this week. Tartan BPA and Tartan DECA are holding fundraisers with Men's Warehouse to help students lower the cost of their suit or tux rentals. And lastly, Tartan DECA has 12 students attending the International Career Development Conference from April 27 to May 1. 10 of the students are competing with two attending conferences. This has been the most students from Tartan to attend the international conference in more than 10 years. All of the students are very excited to be a part of the nearly 20,000 students competing, spend some time at the pool, and also explore Universal Studios. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Any comments, questions? Okay, thanks again. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent Troy Miller.
Yes, and it's my pleasure to introduce Skyview Middle School Principal Lynn Pham. She is going to come up and highlight some great things happening over at Skyview. So welcome, Lynn. We're trying to adjust the volume in the back. We know there's an echo there, so they're working on that. So hopefully, that will get cleared up shortly.
Good evening, Chair Yenner and members of the Board, Superintendent Osorio, and members of the Cabinet. It's my pleasure to showcase to you tonight Skyview Middle School. My vision is to create a community where students, staff, and families feel safe welcoming, and feel safe and welcomed walking through the doors of our building. It is surreal that two years ago today, well, probably around today, in April, I was up here, introduced as the new Skyview principal. And how time flies. And I'm so excited and elated to share with you all of the accomplishments that we've made and the successes thus far. I'll begin by sharing our school goals and explaining how we are accomplishing those goals that we've set this year. So what does the data show? Based on MCA data from 2018, 54% of our students scored proficient or exceeds in MCA scores in reading, and 56% scored proficient or exceeds in math. That's just over, a few points over the district average. I'm happy to share with you that our suspension data is down by 61%. This time last year, we had 44 suspensions, and currently, this year, up to April, mid-April, we have only 17. So what are our school goals? As you can see here, the goals are stated on the slides, and I'm going to highlight a few items that we're focusing on. In terms of behavior, our school goal is to create environments that are predictable for students and staff, meaning that it is imperative to have systems to align, to establish clear expectations and protocols on how to handle specific situations. For example, when adults need to teach our students hallway expectations, they need to teach what that looks like using calm bodies and appropriate language. At the same time, we also need a response protocol when students need reteaching and to issue appropriate logical consequences. Students need to know the why. They need to be, they need to learn how hallway expectations relate to safety in the schools. Switching to academics, we focused on teaching engagement strategies for our students. We're learning ways to meet the needs of learners, and we focus on the importance of circling the classroom in order to engage with our students and check for understanding. One instructional strategy that we've really honed in on is the 10-2-2 Avid Strategy. That's where a teacher instructs for 10 minutes and takes a two-minute break for students to confer with one another, and then has two minutes to also reflect on their own. And so that is a concurring situation where in a certain period, we would probably break two times during a teaching period. So what's the culture and climate at Skyview? Under our Behavior Goal umbrella, we've been working diligently on self-care and mindfulness. Students are learning calming strategies such as yoga calm, movement breaks, and mindful moments. Adults are learning that in order to be their best selves, that they need to make sure that they're taking care of themselves and handling stress and focusing on their own self-care. Something new we started this year was embedding socio-emotional learning into the classrooms during advisory. We sat down as a team and brainstormed the most recent current events and issues that are arising, and we create lessons based on the needs of what's happening, currently happening in the world. So we focus anywhere between short and long-term goals to cyberbullying. We've also created ways in which students can spread kindness. During advisory, each class signed up for something that they could do in order to improve Skyview. And so one class wrote positive notes and taped them up on lockers of their classmates. They cleaned up the house areas, and they volunteered in classrooms. So what does engagement look like at Skyview? On the left-hand side, notice what's different about this situation. The teacher is desk-free, the students are desk-free, and the students are completely engaged. This is a picture of our Spanish teacher, Ms. Romero. She is a rock star. 90% of her time, she speaks in Spanish to instruct her students. She sets the tone of her classroom for students to take risks. Ms. Romero frequently opens her classroom to other teachers of other districts who come visiting. On the next image on the right-hand side, you'll see an intense competitive game of basketball. The staff versus student basketball game are times where we can step out of our learning environment and have fun. Oh, and not that we're competitive at all, but the staff totally won the game and crushed the students. Below that image, you'll see a big group of students huddled around our teacher, Ms. Landine. These are former students who emailed me and asked me if they could come and celebrate her birthday at Skyview. So they all got rides to the school, they decorated the classroom, and brought delicious treats. So let's be real. What ninth grader do you know would spend time and effort to coordinate such a thoughtful and heartfelt gesture? The answer is our Skyview kids. What does PD look like at Skyview? Most importantly this year, we've delved into inclusion and racial equity. With the support of our District 622 Coordinator of Educational Equity, Wayne Felton, we've really unpacked bias. We've learned how bias affects the way that we respond to certain cultural behaviors in the classroom. And the goal of our equity work is to recognize that we have a diverse group of learners, and we need to change our teaching style because our demographics are changing. We work towards moving from a punitive environment to a more restorative environment. We are learning how to support students who have faced trauma in their lives and to teach coping skills so that they can navigate through some heart-wrenching situations. Additionally, teachers are sharing their ideas with each other. Some have taken the leap to facilitate professional development and share their teaching strategies such as formative assessments in the classroom that work for them. At the most recent PD session, we invited students to share their experiences of what school looked like for them as students. It was powerful to hear their voices and their feedback in terms of what we can do to make sure that Skyview is an inclusive environment. I heard one student say, "Teachers can be strict, but they also need to ask me how I'm doing at home." And what does Avid look like at Skyview? In 2018, we reached demonstration status. And this was a huge accomplishment because only 3% of student, of Avid schools actually reached the status. Our Avid system is growing, and we're expanding from three sections to four sections next year. Avid students feel that Avid is a security blanket for them. They call our teachers Avid Dads and Avid Moms all throughout the building. Recently this month, Avid certifiers came for a coaching visit to our school, and they were impressed, they were so impressed of the level of rigor that they asked us to present at the National Institute for, at the Avid Conference. At one point, I looked over at one of the certifiers, and I could see tears swelling up in her eyes, and I asked her if she was okay, and she said- and I asked her if she was okay, and she said, "I just want to go back and be a student here at Skyview." And it was so heartfelt to me. So to conclude, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to showcase this middle school tonight. I feel honored to be in this role and to serve for students, staff, and families at Skyview. As I complete my 18th year of education, I know that I'm just a lifelong learner, and I'm excited to learn more. I appreciate the opportunity to brag about Skyview, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Do we have any questions or comments? Teresa?
Thank you for presenting. Just two questions quickly. How many of your sections would not be participating in Avid? You said you're going to expand to four. What does that represent? 50% of the students, 80%? Do you have any idea?
So it's roughly about 10% of students are in Avid. So currently, the number of Avid students are 79, so we'd increase by roughly 30. So a little over 10%.
And then my second question is, you mentioned that you talk about community, or what's the news? And I can't imagine, you know, even weather has been very difficult this year. How do you stay positive, or how do you turn those very, you know, what could be political or very, a lot of anger? How do you, how do you coach that topic to, so it's not such a negative, you know, conversation?
Sure, sure. So that's a huge focus of school this year. So instead of no running, no swearing, we're switching the language that we use to use appropriate language while calmly. And that's the same with, I would say, with advisory. When we teach social-emotional learning, that we teach empathy and we teach compassion. And so with all of the negativity going around, we have to also understand that middle schoolers are where they are, and we also need to help support them and provide them with the correct language to use, and also to understand that we are all humans.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay. Next, we have from Community Education, Teri Johnson and Tad Hagan.
Good evening. We're really pleased to be here to highlight another area of community education tonight. And I believe this is Tad's first time speaking to the board, so I'll give you a little background about him. We were really excited to hire him a little over three years ago. He had some great background in school-age care and youth enrichment, which goes along with our out-of-school-time theme. He came to us with an educational background of teaching and educational leadership for a master's and a community education director license. And so, he's got a real focus on creating quality environments for children, as well as a real focus on equity and working well with our families. So it's my pleasure to introduce Tad Hagan.
Thank you, Teri, for that introduction. Thank you Chairman Yenner, Board, Superintendent Osorio, and members of the Cabinet. I'm Tad Hagan. I'm the supervisor for out-of-school-time programming. What that means is all of our programming that happens within our buildings outside the standard school day encompasses a great many things that I'll get to within my presentation, but I just want to again say thank you for this opportunity to come here, and my hope tonight is to share with you all the amazing things that my team is doing, as well as some of the great work that they are doing. So, when I was putting this presentation together, there are five things I wanted to focus on. One was celebrating the work that my team does, as well as provide a time to highlight one of our more foundational programs, which is Adventure Connection. Bring to you kind of the nuts and the bolts, the basics around it, but then also share with you a video that gives some testimony to how impactful our programming can be. Also, I want to dive kind of into some of our secondary programming, the middle school, and some of our high school opportunities. And then also, share with you a vision that we have for the future. In all of our work, the strategic plan for District 62 has been a great guide. It helps us with equity in terms of building safe and caring environments for our students in out-of-school-time programming. But the two pieces that we really feel kind of speak to what we do is mission outcomes, number one and number two. I won't read those for you, but with each one, we kind of hit both of them with the work that we do. For the first one, social-emotional learning is kind of the curriculum that we use. We have students who come to us in very vulnerable times, before and after school, non-school days, as well as summer. And we feel that the work that we do in building relationships and giving those students opportunities to choose and be social with one another really is impactful. The second piece is looking at experiential learning with our youth development plan, which you had an opportunity to hear Laura Greenlee Karp earlier this year. The work she's done with experiential learning, with middle school field trips, giving students opportunities to see beyond their walls, so to speak, really has been impactful and just amazing work. So what is out-of-school-time programming? Traditionally, it's a blending of youth enrichment, youth development, with school-age care. What I'm really proud of in our district and our program is, is it's so much more. It goes beyond that traditional sense and really looks at need, and then partnering and collaborating with internal departments, as well as outside organizations to fulfill that need. As I said, you've had an opportunity to hear Laura Greenlee Karp when looking at our youth development plan. But tonight, I'm going to focus on Adventure Connection and our secondary programs in this presentation. Looking at our team, this is our team here at the district center. Megan Pettit, Angie Polos, Jen Bradford, and Kelly Ide are our Adventure Connection team. And Laura Greenlee Karp and Amber Walter support our youth programs. We are kind of two separate teams, but we work really well together. We support youth programs with some of the structures that Adventure Connection has, and we, youth enrichment and youth development kind of bring best practices to Adventure Connection that we maybe have never explored before. Megan is on boards and hires the majority of our staff. Angie Polos is our clerk, and she provides customer service for over 700 families in our Adventure Connection program, as well as partners with our counties in terms of providing assistance for our families. Jen Bratvold does inclusion, professional development for our paras, and Kelly Ide provides health services. She's our program nurse. And Laura Greenlee Karp does the amazing work that she does, and Amber supports her in that work. Here's a list of our site managers at Adventure Connection. They are amazing work. They are boots-on-the-ground, so to speak. They do a great job of building relationships within their buildings and their school community, and really do a great job of coaching and mentoring over 60 para professionals who work in our program as well. A little bit of the basics around Adventure Connection. We have been in partnership with elementary schools for over 30 years. And this is a great opportunity for me to say it's an amazing partnership and give a shout-out to our principals at the elementary schools because they are amazing professionals who advocate for us. They set the tone with the school in terms of all the support staff and building engineers for helping us use the spaces we use, as well as making us feel a part of the school community. And that's just been exceptional. We are open 238 days a year, school before school and after school. And on non-school days in summer, we are open from 11, or for 11 and a half hours, from 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., with a variety of different schedules, provided for families with flexibility being one of our core values. We are a choice-based program that values social-emotional learning. And by choice-based, our students get an opportunity to choose not only activities, but when those activities happen. We believe that they should be open for whenever a student wants to engage in that activity, and that student voice is really foundational for us. We believe in equity, safety, and continuous improvement. I'll speak more to certification and accreditation a little bit later, but they are two big pieces in terms of program quality, which, as we look at the numbers next, I think speaks to what our program does, which is quality. So Adventure Connection by the numbers. There are two points I want to speak to this. Again, I want to thank not only our school principals, but also the, our district at large for being great partners because our growth puts us in a position where sometimes we don't want to turn families away. And school principals have been amazing in finding space for us. And even our transportation department has been creative in creating routes for us to run shuttles between sites so that we don't have to turn families away because just sometimes we run out of space. The second point I want to point out is that quality. We are a convenient program during the school day. We're there, and parents drop off, pick up. But on non-school days, parent families choose us. And for the last three years, our numbers have grown on non-school days because of the great work that my staff have been doing. So, very proud of that. Jill Paul, our marketing specialist in community ed, does a great job of collecting videos. And this is a short video that I want to share with you all to kind of just speak to the testimonials that some of our parents were kind enough to share with us. So, going back to that video, I think pictures speak a thousand words in telling the story better than I ever could. So, the numbers are great. I guess the one piece before I transition away from Adventure Connection is, is just that my staff work in very dynamic situations, and they do amazing work with that. And I just don't get an opportunity to really celebrate them much. So hopefully, if you see an Adventure Connection staff out there, really give them a big thank you for the work that they do. Transitioning now, looking at some of our secondary programming. I'm sorry, I'm emotional. I watch that video every time, and I get teared up. I apologize a little bit. Looking at our secondary programming, the picture on the left is from our Summer Epic Program. It's kind of similar to Adventure Connection, but with different kind of foundational kind of how programming is done. Really a big push towards experiential learning, service learning, as well as leadership. Really branched out from there and doing some middle school field trips this year on non-school days to provide a place for middle school learners to go and experience. They've, they've been to Trollhagen to do a ropes course. They've also been to try to do some sledding at Afton Alps, but the weather this year was pretty challenging for all of us, but they, they did the best they could. And on the right is something that, we're in our second year of providing, that's Tartan Service Day. So on April 2nd, when the sophomores were taking MCA tests, half the students were taking tests, and half the students needed something to occupy their time. We stepped in and provided a service learning opportunity. So we had a little bit of discussion around how you can be a service leader just through the power of promise, of just delivering on what you say. And then provided an hands-on activity that we made over 1,800 prize packs for the Special Olympics. And so that was a very impactful moment for us as well. Just to conclude, looking at OST in the next, in the future. Accreditation for our Adventure Connection program is something we're undertaking in the fall. We do great work, but we want to standardize that work across all of our sites to really bring program quality up to where it needs to be in some of the areas that, you know, we all look at in the future with equity and also just having best practice guide us. Also, professional development, just serving our students. ACES training, trauma training, equity training, and then starting that discussion so we align with the schools around restorative practices is huge for us. And then finally, the last piece that we're really excited about is our outreach into the community. We've always, in our learning, have seen that transportation is a barrier. And we've been brainstorming on this and thought, why not take our programming to the community? So we're in the process of repurposing a bus that we've had painted, and we're going to be finishing the inside of it and partnering with some of our high schools to build some furniture that would be like a mobile classroom, and take the bus out into the community and bring youth enrichment programming, as well as a variety of other things that it could be used for, a mobile library. The possibilities are endless, and we're really excited about that. So, I really appreciate your time tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for your presentation. I just want to make a comment. I, I think what you do for students is awesome. I also, thanks for what you do for working parents, too. I just recall, you know, I'm an old person now, but I, I had three children in daycare and had to be in Minneapolis by 8:00 a.m. That was a very difficult time in my life. So I have a lot of empathy for working parents. And, I mean, they're just stretched, you know, so, in so many directions. And, and it's great to have this, this service. This is just a terrific thing that you and your staff are doing. Do you feel that gratitude from the, from the parents? Do they tell you those?
Oh, absolutely. Every single day, yeah. They, they choose us, and like I said, we are convenient, but they, they choose us. And they share with that, that video speaks to it. And there's probably more parents we could have filled in that video, but we feel that from them all the time. And we echo that empathy. We try to be very flexible with our scheduling of, you know, taking it away from traditional childcare where it had to be very scheduled to be more flexible for families, providing those various schedules. And so, yeah, we feel that for sure.
Just, just one other comment. My son and his wife have two little kids, and they've always had, they've hired nannies to come in and take care of them. It's very expensive, but the other thing is, they don't last that long, you know? So there's this rotation, right? And, and it's always like a huge panicky problem when, you know, when all of a sudden, there's no one to take care of your children. But this program is always there, right? Yeah. I appreciate that. I think that's driven.
Thank you, Tad. I'm an alumni and parent of Adventure Connection, and so I, I don't need any helps giving you accolades to it because I think it was an awesome opportunity for my kids and for my family, too, as a, working in the medical profession. It was great to have a dad that didn't always get everything to school, but could somehow manage to get the kids there, and then the staff took over. But my question is, and I'm not sure you'll be able to answer it, it might have to go to Randy. With Castle and Richardson being both Adventure Connection sites and bigger sites, we're not offering Adventure Connection there this summer, are we? So, are we lessening, are lessening the number of kids we're taking? Or are we opening other sites?
I'm happy to answer that.
You are going to answer? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We will not be at Castle and Richardson this summer, but we've been planning for over a year, looking at that possibility. And we are taking the same amount of students we've taken in the past.
Perfect.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Well, I just want to thank you on behalf of another consideration. My daughter works for Adventure Connection. And as well as the opportunities that she's had because of the school district, the opportunities that she now has as an employee. As a father, I can share all sorts of stories about how hard it is to get my kids motivated to do things. But my daughter has never had a problem being motivated to go to work at 6:00 o'clock in the morning. Comes home every day excited with the things that she's seen the kids do and the opportunities that her supervisor gives her to work with children in different situations and things, and has led her to more vigorously plan and pursue a career as a para. As a father, I'm, I can, I can only give you my deepest gratitude for being able to provide a work experience with proper supervision that allows some people like my daughter to get up every morning knowing she's going to be successful. morning knowing she's going to be successful in her day's activities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was just, the whole Outreach and Youth programs really spoke to me. I grew up in a small town in southern Minnesota with less than 600 people and no public library. So, when you talked about that bus, I mean, the bookmobile coming was the highlight every two weeks, you know, truck up there with your library card and be able to check out books. So, I would love to hear more, you know, once you've got that up and going and just see how, what the response is, really.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thanks again. My third grade son is always jealous of the AC kids because he's not an AC kid. But can you tell me just, what is the accreditation? Like, who is accrediting you? And also, will you just tell, just briefly, about the cost structure and is there an opportunity for low-income kids?
Absolutely. So accreditation is, the process is, there's a variety of different program quality assessments out there. We happen to partner with MinSACA, which is the Minnesota School Age Caring Association, and they provide something called MAP. It's Minnesota After-School Accreditation Program. And they have a very great infrastructure in terms of providing how to get your program to meet certain criteria. And ours meets a majority of that criteria. There's just work to be done in some areas. And then our fee structure is based upon, so before and after school, their, schools have different start and end times. So, the morning session can be larger for one school and shorter in the afternoon versus flip-flop for another. So for the longer period of time, our fee structure is around $11.10 a day. And then for the larger piece, it's $11.25. And we partner with our three counties that we serve, Washington County, Ramsey, and Anoka, to put families who need that assistance, touch, put them in base with the county. And they provide assistance to them. Yep.
Okay, great. Thanks again. Thanks for your work on this and thanks for the presentation. Okay. Next, we have from the business office, discussion on commissioners' review and comment for proposed building bonds and an opportunity for the public to speak. Randy is going to talk to us about that.
Madam Chair, Directors of the Board, Superintendent Osorio, and Cabinet members, it's my privilege to be here tonight to talk a little bit about the culmination of what we've worked on over the last two years. As you all know, we started out with facilities planning over two years ago. And as you heard from our open forum, we do have a bond referendum, a $275 million bond referendum, coming to vote on May 14th. And so, one of the things that has to occur over the course of getting ready for this bond referendum is we have to do a, and get approved by the Minnesota Department of Education, a review and comment. And so, it's an intense document. Ours happens to be ninety-five pages. A lot of research goes into it, talks about the geographical area of our school district, enrollment projections, what our existing facilities are, including the ages. It talks also about a list of facilities and their deficiencies, the demonstrated needs that we have in the district, the benefits that the referendum will have on the community and the students and the staff in general. Also talks about the description of the project, which in this case will be phase two and three of our facilities plan. And then, project financing. How are we going to finance it? What's the estimated expenditures? And then, what's the impact to our taxpayers? And then, it also assures that we're going to meet compliance to federal and state laws, et cetera. So, we put this together and we send it to the Minnesota Department of Education. They take a look at it. They get sixty days to review it. If they have any questions, they come back to us to substantiate things, et cetera. And then, at the end, we get a, either a rejection or a acceptance of our review and comment. And so, part of that is what you see in front of you is a letter from the Commissioner of Education informing Superintendent Osorio that we have a positive review and comment. Also, what needs to happen is we have to publish, and I'll show you that in a second, some expenditure guidelines and this review and comment approval, a positive review and comment to our paper. And then, as part of the statutes, also, we have to have a public forum here, very similar to our Truth and Taxation, where we give the opportunity for the public to speak at the forum. So, the part that's going to be actually propos, or published in the paper is, starting right here, the description of the proposed school construction project. And as you can see, it breaks down, it talks about the 275 million. It actually breaks down each and individual project, the estimated cost of the projects. And then, at the end, talks about review and comment statement, again, based on the department's analysis of the school district's required documentation and other pertinent information from sources of Minnesota Department of Education. The Commissioner of Education provides a positive review and comment. Again, at this time, I guess I would open it up to any stakeholders, any public, for comments or discussion, if there are any. And at this point, I would open up to you folks if you need anything clarified about what I just presented.
Yeah, thank you, Randy. Kim, you were going to keep track of if there's any review comments, I'm guessing.
Yes, I did not have anyone pre-registered for that portion.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Kim.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Teresa?
Randy, for the viewer out there that's going, why did this come after the boards made their decision? Could, you know, because we've sent it out to all of our people and now this comes out. And so, this is not intended to change our minds. It's not intended to do anything of that. So, I know you can't probably explain government, but could you just kind of emphasize how this is a statute and that this is a good thing and that we're going to be thrilled to get it published?
Absolutely. It's a checks and balances. And of course, you've already taken action through board resolution to proceed with this facilities plan with the $275 million worth of bonding that's necessary here. And this is just a culmination, and it is a good thing, that the Minnesota Department of Education has approved and sees worthy this project for School District 622. They're approving this and it meets their guidelines.
So, since we don't have a whole lot of time, does this go to the Lilly, then, our official newspaper and every version of it since?
Correct.
To be published and in that regard, it's correct?
So that's exactly right. So this will come, this will come out in the Lilly Review. And it has the last three pages of this review and comment. And then, also, we'll put this on our website. And if more information is needed, the stakeholders can reach out to myself or Superintendent Osorio.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
So Randy, is it correct to say that a summary of this process is that the board did its due diligence in reviewing all the work that the superintendent and cabinet did to prepare different alternatives, different possibilities? Once we made a decision to move forward, then it goes before the commissioner for review? So this is, this is a standard process of a review to make sure that the board did its due diligence, following the superintendent and the staff's work to prepare everything for the vote and for the bond. And so this is nothing out of the ordinary, even though it's showing up at our board meeting tonight, it's part of the regular process.
That is exactly right. Yep, you are, you were right on, spot on.
Okay, so as always, we need to thank you again for your work on this. You said it was seventy-eight pages.
Ninety-five, actually.
Ninety-five pages of a description of the construction project.
It actually takes a team to put this together. Greg Crowe from Ellers is here also, if there were any questions.
Thank you.
By the public. He and his team helped put the financing piece together, as you're aware of. And obviously, cabinet members, stakeholders, the board, staff members participated in actually putting this together directly or indirectly.
Right.
So I want to thank everybody who did participate in that process.
Thank you. And for all the high school kids who are here, this is what a finance director does. So, thanks again, Randy.
Thanks again.
Okay. Next, we have Superintendent Osorio with Facilities.
Okay. All right. Do we have it on here? Thank you.
All right, Chair Yena, Directors of the Board. Tonight, as you know, is our last official business meeting before our May 14th vote. And so I wanted to take a moment to go back over and recap for our viewing audience and of course, for our many members in the actual audience this evening, some of the key components about why we are bringing this referendum to our public for a vote on May 14th. Many of you have heard some of these details before, but I thought it was really important to kind of go back over kind of the reasons why we're going out with this important ballot question this spring. We've had many, many meetings this past fall, winter, spring about this topic, but I wanted to kind of go back over a couple of key components, just to remind people about why we have this on our ballot. I'm going to gloss over a couple of the traditional slides about how the geography of our school district, we all kind of know we're north St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale, but we're also the northern part of Woodbury, Pine Springs, a piece of Lake Elmo, and Landfall. Our goal in all of this is to build safe and secure schools, innovative and healthy learning environments. We all know this began with an energy audit back in 2016, but we're also spent some time uncovering a lot of other problems that we had with our schools, including traffic flow, space utilization. We know that our buildings are over fifty years old and our buildings were built in an era where they did not serve the needs of the kiddos the way we serve school children today. Back in the day that our buildings were built, we did not provide the kind of services in school that we do today. Today, we provide a lot of small group instruction. We provide spaces for small group reading and math instruction. We provide instruction for students learning English as a second language. We provide special education programming for our learners. We provide breakout spaces for students needing to meet with school counselors, social workers, and such. And many of our elementary spaces simply were not built to provide those spaces. So what happens is our teachers create them on their own. Our elementary spaces have been carved up and people use modular furniture. They use homemade room dividers, many times bookcases and homemade room dividers to try to create those spaces. They've created small group meeting spaces in hallways. And many of us who've been in our elementary schools have seen these spaces before. We have our elementary schools. We have teachers who have found intervention spaces in our school basements, in storage rooms. As you know, we have many places where school libraries have been lost because we have a need for instructional space. Our libraries, many of them have gone away in our elementary schools in particular. This is an example of a school library that was moved to a stage. The school stage has been taken over by a school library. In our elementary schools, we have a lot of shower stalls because in the day that our schools were built, we had shower stalls everywhere. Because in those days, our engineers actually had to take showers after they climbed inside our boilers to service our boilers. They literally had to climb inside them to service them. These shower stalls have become places where are now, as this, on the left, you see a school social worker's office that's now a shower, that's in a shower stall. To the right, you see a shower stall and storage room that a school principal offices out of three days a week because he gives up his own office for people to be able to use his own office, school counselors, social workers who are serving learners. He had a phone line wired into this shower stall so that he could call parents while he's working out of this shower stall three days a week. These are the kinds of creative things our staff are doing to make space in their elementary schools. Here's an example of a staff member working with learners in an electrical closet. She's creative. She's tried to make it look pretty so that it doesn't look so much like an electrical closet, but it's still an electrical closet where she's working with our struggling learners. So these are the kinds of creative things our staff are doing. Because the way we serve our learners today is just different. We need small group meeting spaces. We have here an example of a reading teacher entering some school data. You can see here, a reading, a student is reading to a teacher while she's entering data. That red curtain might look cute. It's covering a toilet. That's what you see on the right-hand side of the screen. This is the kind of space that people are using and teaching our learners in because we don't have enough small group meeting space. This picture was taken just a few weeks ago. These are the kind of spaces we're working in right now, simply because the way we do school, the way we teach our learners, has changed over time. We now provide educational services that we didn't use to provide. In the time when our schools were built many years ago, students with special needs didn't go to school with their gen ed peers. This is a picture here from Oakdale Elementary School. We now provide services in our schools for students with multiple needs. Multiple needs are students who might have physical needs, cognitive disabilities, and they might be in wheelchairs. Many of our students in these kinds of programs also need toileting services. They might need diaper changes. They might be students who have physical disabilities. Our students are in programs where our buildings weren't designed for the kinds of services we need. This year alone, we had a student in an electric wheelchair arrive at Maplewood Middle School. And Maplewood Middle School, if you didn't know, is not wheelchair accessible. In this current school year, right now, not wheelchair accessible. We had to do some retrofitting just to allow that student to get into the nurse's office this school year, this fall, because it's not wheelchair accessible. We did some retrofitting this school year, but that school still is not wheelchair accessible to the boys locker room and other areas in that building because we have not done some of the things we need to do to make the school work. This is a picture of an elementary school where we house our highest multiple needs program for students with disabilities. And again, you'll see another shower stall where we do some toileting and diaper changing. You can see a classroom here where we also do some toileting and changing happening. A teacher here did some pretty innovative things, creating a homemade privacy curtain so that she could have an adult do some changing of students because there wasn't a space available to do that. So, she didn't want to have that happening in the view of other students in a classroom. But that's kind of some of the situations we're facing right now in our elementary schools in 622. So we're in a place where our needs have changed and our buildings have not changed yet. Just wanting to remind people why we brought this to the ballot this spring. We've got some overcrowding in our high schools. Part of our ask is that we want to separate bus drop-off and pickup zones. We want buses to be in one part of buildings, one side, and car traffic, drop-off and pickup to be on a different side. Modern school buildings, you don't put them both at the same door. You put bus drop-off and pickup on one side of a building and you put car drop-off and pickup on another side of a building. So part of our goal in building safe schools is separating those two. So that's part of our proposal as well. So, again, we're working on that. You know that our North High School is our newest building in our district. It's still not quite big enough for the needs of our students there. So, we still have students every hour of the day walking back and forth to the Old North High School where we're standing right now to utilize the classrooms on the third floor of this building. So every bell, they go back and forth so that they can access the classrooms on the third floor. Our goal, if this were to pass in May, is to allow us to put some small addition on the front of the building so we can put some classrooms there so students would no longer have to walk down the street to be able to get to class. And that way, not only would they be out of the wind and the rain and the snow, but they would also be able to be all in one building when and if we have to have lockdown drills and such. In this era of school safety, we also know that it's easier to conduct drills and heaven forbid, a real lockdown if we have students all in one building where we can do those. I'm going to fast forward. Obviously, we're watching the demographic changes in our district, trying to predict what those will look like. We've talked a lot about the fact that we have some old debt. The last time we went out for a facilities bond referendum was in the early 90s. And so it's been a long time. And fortunately, we have some old debt coming off from that last bond referendum. And we're looking forward to the opportunity to reinvest in some new facilities debt if the voters so approve in May. If that happens, we'll have the opportunity to reinvest and renovate our buildings. We've done a lot of community meetings and we've talked quite- We've done a lot of community meetings, and we've talked quite a bit about that, so I won't go into a recap of all those meetings one more time. But if viewers are interested in some of that, that information is on our website as well. I'm going to go ahead a little bit to kind of the goals. If we do pass this referendum in this, in May, school safety is a key ingredient. A key ingredient is that we want to be able to have secure, double vestibule school entrances. Part of the problem is, in our older buildings, is that our school offices are still, in many of our cases, housed in the middle of our school buildings. We want to bring those offices forward and put them at the front entrance. We also want to have a double vestibule secure entrance that would route visitors through a side door where they can be met by a live person in the front office. That live person will have an opportunity to screen the visitor, chat with them, figure out their purpose for being there. And even if they're allowed to enter the building at that point in time, they would still be only allowed into the building if they have a badge and they're allowed with badge access to the rest of the building. Ideally, most visitors will be maintained at that entrance because you'll have a conference area there where visitor, business will be taken care of right at that front entrance. Of course, the other big piece about school safety and security is rerouting the drop-off and pickup zones, but also some hardware that's going to allow us to do better lockdowns in our school classrooms so that we can have safer lockdown zones, and also some technology that's going to allow us for some push-button lockdowns and technology for improved communications. One thing I've been really clear about in our presentations and conversations with community, school safety begins with people. I don't want anyone to think that school facilities takes the place of us having all of our students connected to people. We want our students connected to school clubs, activities to each other. We want strong relationships with our students. We want our students to have strong connections to adults. We also want to have strong supports for mental health supports and systems in our school systems, counselors, mental health providers, behavior support systems in our schools. None of this that I'm talking about takes the place of those key ingredients. People matter first. All of this is secondary to that. But the point of the matter is that for this particular referendum, this is about building bonds, and that, those dollars can only be used for building construction. And, sorry, this monitor's flipping out on me a little bit. But I don't want anyone to think that by proposing these items, we're not prioritizing people. People come first. It's just that for this particular ballot item, this is only about facilities and building bonds, and that's what's on the ballot for this particular vote. But never would we ever say any of this matters before the human element, relationships, and taking care of our kids in a manner that makes sure people are connected to people. So, moving forward with safety and security, we are looking at some investment in some furniture, especially flexible seating in our elementary schools where students do spend the vast majority of their day in one single classroom. Flexible seating basically means we would have a couple of options in a classroom. You might have a couple of stand-up desks, a couple of different types of seating for students who need to change position during the day. Think about it like this. In your own home, you like to sit at your dining room table, you might like to sit at the sofa, you might like to sit on a duck chair. We like to provide a few different options. In secondary schools, students move every hour. In elementary school, you're in the same room all day. We want to make sure that people have an opportunity, especially our young children, to change positions and have some different options for seating. That's not a huge piece of our proposed budget, but it is a piece that we're considering, especially for the flexible seating, and we know brain research shows that students who have opportunities to move a little bit can learn better. School consolidations and closures are not on the ballot for May 14th, but we are trying to be very transparent that part of our proposal does include a plan to consolidate from 14 traditional schools to 11. And so, while that is not something that's specifically being voted on on May 14th, we want to be very clear that that is part of the proposal. And I just want people to be very aware, and so that if they haven't had a chance to look at those specific pieces and proposal in the plan, I want people to take time to check those parts out of the plan so that we don't have confusion about that later. Also, school boundaries, attendance boundaries within our district are also proposed to be changed, at least within the next few years, because every district does reorganize their attendance boundaries from time to time because densities of neighborhoods do change over time. And we have not altered our attendance boundaries for schools in quite some time, and we're due for some changes in the near future, so that will also be happening in our near future as well. So with that, I'm giving you a little abbreviated version because we've kind of had a lot of these presentations in recent years, but what's most important is that anyone in our viewing audience, I want to make sure that people make informed decisions for their vote on May 14th. Early voting is open, so if people are going to the polls early, please do take time to learn about the issues, learn about the proposal. The slides I'm sharing with you this evening are also available on our website. People can watch the full presentation with a recording and closed captioning as well. So people who haven't had a chance to attend one of our live public meetings can also watch a video of that and get the information as well. Our website is open for questions, and we do respond to questions, and we also post other people's questions and answers as well, so people who have not had a chance to come to a live presentation can have their questions answered. And many times, questions you may have have already been posted with the answers to them as well. So I'm going to post the website here, but in the meantime, board members, are there any questions that you all have regarding recent communications, questions about that? I know this is our last official business meeting before May 14th, so please, if you do have any comments or questions about that, feel free to let me know about that as well. I'll go right to our communications information as well.
Christine. Thanks so much for all the work you've done on this. I know it's just been intense, and I'm so impressed with the way we've told our story. I think, I think it's been great. You know, serving on the school board is sometimes kind of lonely because we don't have people in the audience very often, right?
Yes.
And so it's very gratifying to see, you know, all those people tonight, for example, who came, all ages, to tell us that they support what we're doing. I was especially moved by seeing two former board members, well, I know Amy Coburn was here too, but two former board members who were on the board when I joined the board almost 20 years ago, were still here, and they still care. And I think they would agree with me that this is probably the most important thing we've done for this community in, you know, 20 years for sure, and probably longer than that. This is, this is really ambitious, but it's so needed, and the timing with the debt falling off and being able to do it in an affordable way is just, is just a really a happy thing. So, yeah, I, and I just, you know, the safety, there's so many reasons to vote for it, but you know, the safety aspect is very key. I mean, Michelle has talked about how she goes to a lot of schools with her kids in sports and things, and every other district, Lisa could probably talk about, oh, St. Paul has these double vestibules already, right? I was in St. Paul last week going to an ECFP program with my two daughters who have little baby kids, and, and they had, you know, the security at Cross Winds, Crossroads?
Crossroads.
Crossroads, yeah. And you have to buzz in and, I mean, this is the kind of thing, you know, that we need. We can't wait for a tragedy to happen before we do these kinds of improvements, so. So anyway, you know, I'm, we're on a roll. Thanks for your efforts. I think we're, I'm really psyched, so, thanks.
I live within a block of North High School, and I think when you talk about public safety for our schoolchildren, watching those students cross that parking lot five or six times a day, being out in the open and fully exposed, and every time I hear of another tragedy on the news, I immediately think of all those kids walking back and forth. It doesn't do any good to lock the doors when they're outside. That's just one way that, that I look at it. But I was wondering if maybe you could just really briefly summarize, if this passes on May 14th, what can the public expect to see in terms of, of the old ones, the old financing leave and the new financing come and stuff? That this isn't, even though we vote on May 14th, this is not an abrupt change that's going to happen on May 15th. So maybe if you could just summarize that process a little bit for people who might be wondering how that's going to work?
Absolutely. So if this passes on May 14th, remember, none of the official architectural drawings have been done yet. So we have held off doing so because to get that level of specificity in our planning is costly, and we don't want to invest in that unless we're sure that's where we're actually going. We have done cost estimates on all of these projects in order to be able to budget for them, but in order to do that, it's going to take us about six months to actually do the official architectural drawings. And in that time, there's going to be a lot of planning happening at these school sites to move forward with even the conversations at the ground level about what all's going to happen. There's going to be a lot of, a lot of conversations happening with school teams at every site that's involved in this construction and planning. So are you thinking of the construction timelines, or are you talking about the financial timelines?
I was thinking that, you know, we talk about $270 million.
Okay.
And replacing bonding, so it's my impression that people will see the financial impact to their taxes.
Sure.
Kind of go up and down a little bit as this moves forward. It's not like they're going to see a $270 million.
No, not at all. In fact, I'm going to, I'm going to bounce back actually to our, the tax picture. It's a little bit fuzzy in this picture, and I'll just give you a quick overview, and then I'll hand it over to Randy, or possibly to Ellers if they're still here. When you talk about the way building bonds are sold, they're different than an operating levy. So one thing that's interesting, when we've done an operating levy in the past, an operating levy has a very clean start date and a very clean end date. When you talk about building bonds, they're sold in batches, so they're going to have some different sell dates and different, throughout the process. And if you look at this picture, and sometimes I like to give the initial explanation because I can give it in regular people talk versus the, the financial advisor talk. So if you look at the red, the red picture is the old voter-approved debt, okay? Now, the old voter-approved debt from the 90s is coming off, and part of the why, the reason why it's stretching out as far as it is, is because we've refinanced some of that old debt, okay? The green is your long-term facilities maintenance debt, and that's the debt that you as board members have the approval to increase and lower every year. This is me increasing and lowering. Do you like my hand gestures? You guys have the, you have the ability to raise and lower that amount every year, and that's money that can only be used to fix things. You can't use that money. But the blue debt is the new proposed voter-approved debt. If our voters approve that new debt, the way we would sell those bonds, we would sell them in a repayment structure that we would evenly match it to backfill exactly how much we have room left in our mortgage, right? So the more, in our payment structure, so if we have this much, a certain amount coming off in the old red debt, we'll set the payment structure to pay this much in the new debt, the new payment. The next year, we'll pay a little bit more in the new bond debt, and this much a little bit more. So the reason why you can keep the line even across the top, we'll tax the voters at an even amount, is because we'll set the repayment structure, and we work with the people who lend us the money, to say, we want to pay back this much this year, and pay back a little bit more this year, and a little bit more this year, and we'll set it up. Our, our financial people will set that up with the people who lend us the money to set up the repayment structure so that it evenly matches the other debt that's coming off. It'll backwards map it perfectly so that the debt repayment stays even. How's that for a non-scientific answer? Now Randy can give you a more technical answer.
That was actually well done. So, so basically, the tax impact would happen in page 20, okay? And so the increase would happen there, and you should see, you know, pretty much a flat schedule throughout the life of these bonds that we'll be selling in three bunches, so.
Basically, as the red money goes down, the blue payments will get bigger.
And the conversations that I've had with people is that, when I tell people that this is a unique opportunity in a moment in time to change the footprint of our school district for decades to come. And that's always the piece that's the hardest to explain, is how that.
Right.
How the taxes aren't going to go up.
Right.
Dramatically while we're waiting for the, the old payments to go down.
Right.
And so I think, I thank you for that because I think that the easier it is for people to understand that piece of it, the more successful they're going to be on deciding how they're going to vote.
Christine, I just want to, you know, say that I've been to every public forum.
Yes, you have. Thank you for that.
You and Josh have been great, but I think what has struck me the most in, in each of those presentations is the community members that have come forward that have either sent their children to parochial school or to a private school who are completely endorsing this. And for the simple rationale that investing in schools, invest in your community. And I particularly liked the one gentleman last week who shared his story that, you know, he's going to be downsizing from his five-bedroom home, and he knows who's going to be looking at this home will be a family, and a family's going to want to know what your public schools are like. And so even though he did not send his children to public school, that is a testament of what, what a simple and very small cost it would be to ensure that his property values go up. And so I think that's what we can embrace about this. The best is that it's well-structured to keep everybody well-informed and keep us stable so we have good economics for our, our own homes as we move forward, should this pass.
One thing that I have not been able to articulate every time I see the pictures of some of the classrooms that are out there, is the fact that when you go home and you find a space to do your studying, or you do, maybe you pay your bills or something like that, in, in real life, when you go home, you try to find a place that is comfortable and conducive, it, it helps you learn because it's a comfortable space that you feel good going to. And I still remember teachers saying, you know, when you go home and if you're having a hard time doing your homework, you know, think about where you're doing your studying. Are you doing it, you know, are you doing it down by the, the water heater? Are you doing it by the furnace? Are you doing it in an electrical closet? If you are, maybe you want to go and do it at the kitchen table, or at a desk, or maybe just go to the library and do your studying there. Why should we have our kids at our schools, our educational schools where kids are there to learn, studying in electronic closets, studying down in the basement where it's borderline dungeon-y? Why are we doing that at the school? It might be hard to find this place to do your taxes, or your bills, or your homework at home, but I think we all can find that place that's special and helps us learn and focus on learning. If we can't provide it, provide that at a school level, come on, that's kind of sad. So thank you for putting this plan together and making our educational spaces as best as, as, as great as they can possibly be.
Okay. Thank you very much, Christine.
Thank you.
Was this your last presentation? Do you have another one?
Oh, no. Not by a, not by a long shot, no.
Well, I know you've given a lot of.
We've got many, we've got many weeks to go, yes.
Next on the agenda, we have from the Business Office, acknowledgment of contributions, Ben German.
Hi, everyone. We're going to be taking a look at Minnesota Statute 123B .02, which permits school boards to, quote, "receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated." In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, the Director of Business Services recommends the following resolution. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 622, that the School Board accept with appreciation the following contributions and permit their use as designated by the donors. Now, we have a lot of awesome donations from the North High. donations from the North High Boys Hockey Program. I'm going to read off the donors and the amounts and know that they are for our North High Boys Hockey Program. So we have Brett and Teresa Hedekin in the amount of $1,000, David and Susan Upsell in the amount of $200, Gilbert Construction in the amount of $500, Hockey &amp; Sons slash Troy Ward in the amount of $500, John Horner in the amount of $50, Lori and Judy Voss $25, Patrick Kinney in the amount of $300, Robert and Christine Michael in the amount of $25, Robert and Marilyn Fisher in the amount of $100, Scott Thorson in the amount of $250, Stephen Splitstasser in the amount of $100, American Legion Post 39 in the amount of $250, Edward and Carrie Lindell in the amount of $200, Glenn Wilson in the amount of $100, John and Cindy Preby in the amount of $50, Mark and Whitney Ostabo in the amount of $50, William and Barbara Swanson in the amount of $50, William and Claudia Corto in the amount of $50, Birdwall Roofing in the amount of $100, Charles and Sherry Thames in the amount of $25, Christopher Thorson in the amount of $300, Daniel and Karen Forsyth in the amount of $25, Daniel and Terry Joe's foe in the amount of $200, Gregory and Tammy Mountquist in the amount of $50, Hendrickson Ace Hardware in the amount of $250, James and Debbie Brown in the amount of $75, Lisa Boone Agency in the amount of $100, Mark and Nancy Johnson in the amount of $100, Merle's Water Conditioning in the amount of $100, Nita Val in the amount of $60, Polar Plastics Inc. in the amount of $200, Sandberg Mortuary Inc. in the amount of $300, Stacy and Curtis Wagner in the amount of $25, and TA Skifsky &amp; Sons in the amount of $150. Those are all of the people that contributed to the North High Boys Hockey Program. To continue, I want to acknowledge Ideal Credit Union in the amount of $1,500 for Meals on Wheels, FormFactor, and they donated tables, cabinets, and shelving to ISD 622, or this was ISD 622 Schools, Megan Kohler Kaiser in the amount of $200 for cower and negative meal accounts, Teresa Aju, she donated pool noodles to the ISD 622 Aquatic and Swim Programs, Doug Huntley 3M Matching Program, $970.30 to Weaver Elementary, Vicki and Matthew Olson in the amount of $100 for Webster Elementary Field Trips, Office Max donating school supplies to Weaver Elementary, Chuck Nelson donating science equipment to Richardson Elementary, Pat Leach donating photo paper to the North High Photography Class, and finally Ideal Credit Union donating $4,400 to Tartan Decca Conference. I'd like a motion to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. So the total fiscal year 2018. So the total fiscal year 2018, 2019 monetary contributions is $86,737.31. Motion for approval from Germain. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Livingston. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So that is approved. Thank you again, Ben. And thank you to all of those generous donors. Um, next we have from Human Resources, Julie Coffey.
I have a few things tonight. We'll start, um, with the recommendation for the termination of probationary teachers. So Minnesota statute 122A point 40 defines the probationary period for our teachers. During the probationary period, an annual teaching contract may be non-renewed for any reason. The probationary time is, uh, period is the time for the district and the employee to determine if the employment relationship is meeting their expectations. Non-renewable probationary teacher can also be done for budgetary reasons. And in addition, we have a few tonight that are done for licensure reasons. Um, in addition, our teacher labor agreement requires that positions that become available after August 1st are posted for a one-year-only position. Um, and so several of the names tonight include individuals who are hired on those one-year-only contracts. A probationary teacher is deemed to have been re-employed for the ensuing school year unless the school board gives written notice before July 1 of the termination of employment. So we're taking action now in order to meet that deadline as well as provide teachers on this list sufficient opportunity to pursue other employment options. Um, all of the teachers recommended for non-renewal this year were notified by their principal prior to tonight's meeting. And so tonight, we're asking for approval of the non-renewal of our probationary teachers listed.
Okay. Thank you, Julie. I'm going to read the resolution. Okay. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 622, that pursuant to Minnesota statute 122A dot 40 subdivision 5, that the teaching contracts of the following probationary teachers are hereby terminated at the close of the 2018-2019 and non-renewed for the 2019-2020 school year effective June 10, 2019. Um, so I'm going to read a list of names and they're all for one FTE unless I indicate otherwise. So Justin Burgess, Kevin Busco, Sally Budwin, Lisa Cannon Ratliff, Julian Chapman, James Collins, Paige Gallagher, Justin Henry, Lindsay Paulson, Lisa Pavel is for point 5 FTE, Gina Shack, Kelly Strasser, Hannah Sundermeyer, Tova Rupp for point 40 FTE, Jessica Wan, Chelsea Wangan, Amy Burgum, Karen Swanson, Tanya Burns, Kelly Brunner, Anita Bruno for point 90 FTE, Kayla Finn, Sarah Johnson for point 49 FTE, Lori Colberg for point 30 FTE, Roberto Pratt, Seth Shaw, Naomi Taylor, Anna Wackles, Tammy Bialik, David Butler, Catherine Cabasis, Kayla Karash, Emily Hangstrom, Mallory Hawk, Stephen Cannavari, Carolyn Libsec, Colleen Mavis, and Barclay Woodbury for point 80 FTE. So I need a motion and a second for approval. Moved by Livingston. Second by Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. If that motion carries. Um, and next Julie again with life insurance renewal.
So our life insurance policy renews July 1, 2019. Madison National Life Insurance is the underwriter of our policy. They are proposing a slight increase in our life insurance rates, um, based on, um, an increase in experience and claims that we've experienced since our last renewal. Um, so the increase is, um, is, uh, going from 0.145 to 0.6165. Um, this life insurance policy also includes an accidental death and dismemberment piece, and there's no change in the rate to that. So tonight, we're asking for approval of the renewal of our life insurance policy with Madison National Life at a rate of 0.165 effective for a two-year period, um, July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021.
Do you have a question, Teresa?
Yeah. Julie, do you anticipate, we don't know yet how that class will be deferred because we're obviously in negotiations. But typically that's, you have a, that's built into something that'll be passed on.
Yeah, we do factor that into our costing. Yeah. Um, for, for the most part, though, life insurance is, um, district paid. Um, so we would take on that cost.
And was this a big surprise?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 622, that the district approves renewal of the life insurance policy with Madison National Life at the rate of point 165 effective for the period July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2021. Okay. Moved by OJ.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. So that motion carries as well. And then Julie again with a newer vendor for employer, employee assistance program.
Yeah. So last month, we approved the medical insurance renewal. And at the time, we went out for the medical insurance bid, we also put out a proposal for a new employee assistance vendor. Um, we did receive, um, proposals from six companies. We met with five. Um, the sixth one was our current vendor that we didn't feel like we needed to meet with again. Um, so we met with everyone, we read their proposals, um, we shared information with our insurance committee, who is, um, recommending the proposal from Vital Workforce. Um, Vital Workforce, or I'm sorry, Vital Work Life was the low-cost vendor, um, and also provided a number of supports for employees as well as their families. Um, our employee assistance program is really underutilized. And, and part of our rationale for taking this out to get some new proposals was to really bring some life back into this, um, employee assistance. This is a incredibly valuable tool for employees and their families. Um, and we want to make sure that employees are able to access and utilize these, these services. Um, it's everything from free telephonic counseling, face-to-face counseling. There's a legal component where you can chat with a lawyer. There's a financial planning piece where you can call up and get some assistance from a financial planner, um, and kind of the gamut of everything from childcare issues to, um, you know, it's time to look at a nursing home for elderly parents and everything in between. And so we want to make sure that our employees are utilizing this resource. And again, this was a good opportunity by going out, um, for a new proposal to look at a new vendor and really promote, um, the way our employee assistance programs works. So tonight, we're recommending the approval of Vital Work Life as the new employee assistance vendor effective July 1, 2019.
Okay. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 622, that the district approve the contract with Vital Work Life as the employee assistance program vendor effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2021. Looking for a motion and a second. Moved by Navy. Second by Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. So that is also approved. And then the last one, Julie, termination of added teacher assignments.
So this is a resolution we bring every year at this time. Um, throughout the year, teachers take on added work assignments and extracurricular assignments. This resolution just ends those, effectively ends those assignments so that they don't become part of the teacher's continuing contract. So tonight, we're asking for, um, approval for discontinuance of the additional work assignments and extracurricular assignments, um, for teacher contracts effective June 30, 2019.
All right. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 622, that the additional work assignments and extracurricular assignment portion of all teacher contracts be terminated effective June 30, 2019. Need a motion and a second. Moved by OJ.
Second.
Second by Germain. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. So that also carries. Thank you very much, Julie. All right. Next on the agenda is for the school board, we have the advisory committee board liaison appointment. So we talked about this at our last study session. Um, we are moving the time that we're going to commit to this position and Teresa is going to stay in it. Okay.
We're all going to be jealous.
Yes.
Okay. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 622, that the school board appoint Teresa OJ to serve as a board representative liaison to advisory for one-year term beginning August 2019 to July 2020. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Um, I need a motion and a second. Okay. Moved by Navy. Second by Livingston. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. So that motion also carries. Um, next we have resolution for school calendar adjustments for the 2018-2019 school year. And Christine or Julie, do you guys want to say something about this first?
Do you want me to?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, just as a reminder, um, uh, you may recall that, um, our legislature just recently passed legislation that allows school districts to, um, basically get, uh, funding for any district days that they canceled school and wish to claim, um, basically immunity for. And so we have named in this resolution the dates which, with which we, uh, would like to claim and count four of our six canceled days as instructional days. One of our days was already made up on March 1st. Um, so this resolution basically allows us to do that. Um, and just as an add-on, we are planning to adopt an e-learning day, or e-learning plan for next school year. Um, that will come to you at a later date. We don't have that planned in place yet, but just, we had it added on to this resolution just for forward thinking that we do plan to have that in place. We'll be bringing that to you at a later date.
Christine, I, I think this is, this was a wise thing for the legislature to do. It, it was not safe to have school on these days. And so this was an unavoidable kind of thing. And to add on days at this time would disrupt all kinds of things, calendars and graduations and who knows what. Um, now, there are some districts that, that have chosen not to pay some people.
Well, the legislation requires us to do so. It does require us to allow people to make up the days.
Right.
So we're working through all those details right now. So we have, we will have to do all of that. And we'll be, we're putting that plan together as well. We're just, this resolution tells us which day, or which of our dates, or how many of the days we're planning to select.
Because I'm expecting that everyone will get paid.
Yeah. We're working through all of that right now. Yeah. Yeah. And the legislation actually says that. Yeah. Do you want to add to that, Julie?
Yeah, so.
Unless they've already been paid.
Right. It, it requires that they, if they were unpaid and would have worked, that they have the ability to be paid or make up a day. Um, and so we have some nuances with our labor agreements that don't necessarily align real well with the way the legislation was, was written. And so that's the piece that we're working through because our employees, many of them already had the ability through their labor agreement to actually come into work on those days, um, to use personal time or to make up the time. And we know a lot of folks already did that. So we're trying to, um, work really hard this week to make sure that our labor agreements align with what the legislation is requiring and figure out where those gaps are and communicate that to employees.
Okay. Because I want us to be as fair as possible and as even-handed as possible.
Absolutely.
Would it be possible for us to get an update, um, as soon as possible on how that was accomplished? Because I think there are also a lot of people working in positions where it's not possible to make up a day or add a day or, or come in on a Saturday or anything, uh, just by virtue of their job class and the work that they do. So if we could get an update to make sure that, I think the, the unvoted direction from the board sort of is, is that the expectation seems to be that, that people do get paid for those days when we pass this resolution. So if we could get some sort of an update at a work-study session and how successful we were in doing that.
Sure. We can absolutely do that.
Okay.
I'm just curious. The way the resolution is quoted, because it's all saying pursuant, isn't that not already embedded in what we're going to adopt tonight? I mean, is there?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It's, yeah, it's, yes. Yes. By this resolution, we are saying that we're going to abide by the statute, which requires those pieces related to pay or designated makeup days. Yep.
Um, for the future, we can avoid this, at least in part, by having the e-learning day.
Absolutely. Yes.
But I remember we couldn't just, um, say, like, have an e-learning day because we have to put that in place before the school year.
We have to have it in place before the start of the school year. So that is our intention to have a, have a plan in place before the start of the school year. So you'll be hearing about that very soon.
Okay. Do you literally have up to the start of the school year to get the place?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Yep.
So sometime.
And, and the state law requires you inform families of it before the start of school year. It does not require MDE preapproval of it. It just requires notification to families. It just requires notification to families.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna read this resolution unless there's any more questions or comments. Resolution for school calendar adjustment for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. Whereas Independent School District number six-two-two canceled instructional days on January twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, January twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, January thirtieth, twenty nineteen, January thirty-one, twenty nineteen, February twenty, twenty nineteen, and April eleventh, twenty nineteen. During the twenty nineteen, twenty, ah, sorry, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year due to health and safety concerns. And whereas the Minnesota Legislature enacted laws of Minnesota twenty nineteen, Chapter Five Senate File one seven four three, which permits Minnesota school districts and charter schools to count these days as instructional days for purposes of calculating the number of hours and days in the school year pursuant to the Minnesota law and the calculation of average daily membership pursuant to Minnesota law for students enrolled both before and after those school closure dates. And whereas the school district wishes to count four of the six dates identified above for the purposes set forth in the laws of Minnesota twenty, two thousand eighteen, Chapter Five Senate File one seven four three. And whereas School District six-two-two will adopt an e-learning plan beginning the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number six-two-two, State of Minnesota as follows. Pursuant to laws of Minnesota twenty nineteen, Chapter Five Senate File seventeen forty-three, the canceled four instructional days will be counted in the calculation of the number of hours and days in the school year and the calculation of the average daily membership for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. And the school district will comply with all other requirements set forth in laws of Minnesota twenty nineteen, Chapter Five Senate Files seventeen forty-three. And the school district will adopt an e-learning plan beginning the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. So I need a motion and a second for that resolution. Okay. Moved by Hunt? Second by Livingston, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. So that resolution also passes. Next, we have board communications. Teresa, do you want to start?
Sure. I, I want, you know, we acknowledged two of our Excel winners tonight, the, from the Department of Equity. And Becky and I went to Gladstone and watched the La Fi, La Fi Latino dancers. And I'm telling you, those kids were, you know, they were outstanding. And that we, I gave praise to the one lone male that was up there. But they, they were very, very impressive. And what was interesting is the crew at the Gladstone. It, it's an older population, and we're not very diverse there. So I'm gonna challenge Terry to think about how can we reach out to more of our, more of our ethnic groups to participate in some of those Gladstone events, just a thought. And then I have to tell you, I went to a class. I took my sixteen-month-old grandson to my, his first ECFE class, just ducky. And I, I was so impressed with the teacher. And I, I don't know if she had a smile pasted on for the entire time because working with, you had to be under five for this class. And there's not a kid sitting, of course, you know, they're all over. And how she maintained and kept them all going. It was very impressive, so very, very well done. And then the other thing I just want to say is that if you have not found an avenue to get the information about the vote that's coming up, any one of our city councils have them, they have the information. They're all willing to give it to you. Or if you're looking to have somebody from the district come and speak, please reach out to our superintendent's office, and we'll get somebody to come and talk to your group.
For those of you watching from home, you probably weren't able to see our, our audience tonight. They were full, every seat was full. And I always get really excited when I see our students here and at other events, especially in general when they're involved in civic engagement activities. And I'd like to thank those students, but I'd also like to recognize their teacher, who has been a Tartan Political Science teacher for her entire education career of twenty-six years, which is outstanding. She teaches political science, criminology one and two, and college in the schools, American Government. And Vicky, fellows, I just wanted to thank you for working for six-two-two and working for our students.
Well, May twentieth will be the last day of the Minnesota Legislature. And the pace is picking up, and, and it's making me very nervous because both, you know, both parties are very far apart in what they'll do relative to funding our schools. And so if you're so inclined, it'd be good to pay attention to that. I mean, if, for example, we were given only a half a percent increase, it would mean layoffs for this district and districts across the state. So that is not acceptable. And I would encourage people to pay attention because we just can't let that happen. So, that's it.
I will say one thing about attending the Gladstone event. We talk about our commitment to lifelong learning, and that was one of the things. Going to that event, I didn't expect to learn something new, but I did. Jill was sharing about Brazil and why Brazil speaks Portuguese when the rest of South America does not. And so it was enlightening to me. I really enjoyed that experience. I also participated in the Project Six-Two-Two Connect that we had a couple weeks ago. And I just want to give a shout-out to everyone who was involved in that event. I think we served a lot of families that day. And I think it's a really positive thing for our district, so thank you to everyone for that. I also had the opportunity last week to go visit at Quora. I believe that's how it's pronounced. The school, our nine-sixteen school over in Roseville. Got to have a tour of that. And I will say, when I first walked in, that double vestibule and the whole security that they have, when you, I had to log in on an iPad and take your picture, and you get a sticker printed. And I don't know that we're gonna have quite that, that level of, of safety and security. I know the double vestibules, but it, it also made me think about things that we can look to for the future. Maybe that's not, you know, some of that stuff isn't now, but it could be tiered for later. So I enjoyed that opportunity as well.
Anyone have dogs in here? All right. So I'm continuing my journey through the different buildings in the district. I recently went to Next Step. And if you don't know, at Next Step, the kids have a program, the students have a program at that school, at that place, where they bake dog biscuits right there at the facility. And then they have a business program that they have where they have a business model, and then they sell said dog biscuits. So I didn't know about that. I thought that was a wonder. And so if you have a dog, check that out. It's like a really great way for kids to learn and to get confident going out into the real world. So, last comment, vote on May fourteenth.
Ben? You know, I also want to say that Richardson is having their carnival next Friday. And I was recently at a planning meeting, and the, you know, the folks who are putting the carnival together, were talking about how flexible they have to be because of the construction. And they told lots of stories about how flexible the teachers are being and how the teachers are really trying to make it work, and it's really difficult for them. So I do feel like reading to acknowledge that this probably is not an easy time for the Richardson teachers and for the Castle teachers. And we appreciate everything they're doing to be flexible through the construction. And I hope moving forward, if the levy does, or if the referendum does pass, that we can minimize the disruptions. I know we try to minimize them, but minimize them as much as we can. And again, we just appreciate all those teachers and administrators who are trying to get through the school year. Okay, with that, we have future board meeting dates. May twenty-first, twenty nineteen is our business meeting at six P.M. in the boardroom. June eleventh, twenty nineteen is our workday section at four thirty P.M. in room two oh two. And with that, we can adjourn the meeting. I need a motion in a second. Moved by Navy, second by Anderson, all in favor say aye. And all opposed say nay. The meeting is adjourned.